Everybody ready? Okay. Zoning Board reopening public hearing. We're open, this is a new public hearing tonight for Northeast Utilities. Karen, would you please read it into the record?
The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the hearing room of the Southborough Townhouse, Seventeen Common Street, on Wednesday, July 29th at 8:30 PM, with regard to the petition of Northeast Utilities, 157 Quarterville Road. The petitioner is seeking a special permit pursuant to Section 174-113, illumination of signs. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the office of the Building Department at the Townhouse during normal business hours. Leo F. Bartolini, Jr., Chairman.
Karen, would you read the recommendation from the Planning Board, please?
To the Zoning Board of Appeals from Jennifer Burnetown Planner, May 18th, 2015, regarding 157 Quarterville Road, Northeast Utilities. In accordance with the Section 174-11 of the Code of the Town of Southborough, at its regularly scheduled meeting of May 18th, 2015, the Planning Board met and reviewed the proposed request for a sign at 157 Quarterville Road, and reports that, one, the sign scale is in reasonable relationship, relation to development scale, viewer distance, and travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures. Answer is yes. Number two, the sign size, shape, and placement serve to define or enhance architectural elements of the building, such as columns, sill lines, cornices, and roof edges, and do not unreasonably interrupt, obscure, or hide them. Answer is non-applicable. Number three, the sign design is in harmony with other signage on the same or adjacent structures, and provide reasonable continuity and mounting location and height proportions in materials. Answer is yes. Number four, the sign material's color, lettering style, illumination, and form are reasonably compatible with the building design, neighborhood, context, and use. Answer is yes. Number five, the sign size, location, design, and illumination are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Answer is yes.
All right. You want to step forward, sir? Indicate who you are and use the microphone.
My name is Scott Celewski. I work for Divine Sign. I'm representing Northeast Utilities.
Okay, before you start, we don't have a proper letter here to give you authority in to do so. Now, on the original application, there's one, which I don't understand what it is to do with the director of the real estate property. Who is the owner of this property?
Northeast Utilities.
All right, so why does this say Director of the Real Estate Property?
Can I see that?
And then I wrote a letter to you two weeks ago requesting you to give us a letter from Northeast Utilities, giving you authority to do this, which you gave it to us tonight, which was supposed to have been 10 days ago, to go on public file. So, under the condition of it, but this is not really, I mean, I don't know what the Board thinks about it, but I just, I mean, I don't think it's preferable, proper, done that way. The issue is, which we're going to change down the road, and for this time here, I think if the Board agrees, we're going to let it go forward. Excuse me, one other thing, Jeff, you're not sitting on this one, you know it, okay? The other thing is that it says applicant name, applicant address, contractor phone, and applicant owner. So, we're going to, property owner's name. I think we're going to redo some of that, because basically, the sign people that are getting the sign are the owners of the business, not the landowner. They may be the same person, but in some places, it may be a landowner and another business owner. So, that should be the way it is. And technically, there is nobody here from them to answer questions we may ask as the owner of that property, or that business, which is an issue. So, I mean, we'll go forward, and you make your presentation, and we'll see the way the Board entertains it as we go along. Excuse me, yes, Karen?
Should we explain who this is? Let him read this letter from the, and this is in the application.
Yeah, well, that, the one in the application, he don't, do you, do you know what that one is?
The original authorization in the application.
That was given to us by Laura Tano Sign.
And who, by who?
Laura Tano Sign, they're in charge of doing the Eversource changeover for all the facilities, and then they subcontract out to other sign companies, because they're in Connecticut.
But it says property owner. Now, am I reading that wrong?
What on the application?
Right there, no.
Oh, here?
What does that say?
Northeast Utilities.
No, up above, title.
Director of Real Estate Property Management.
Yeah. So, the thing is, the Board realizes it. We'll let you go forward with your presentation, and then as we go along, we'll see whether we're going to discuss it or whatever. Okay? So, go ahead, sir.
Well, I guess the town bylaws-
Oh, excuse me, one other question, just everybody knows. The Planning Board wrote their letter, that's all they put, but they, they did not give any other recommendations. Under the bottom of the letter, it says recommendation by the Planning Board, but they did not give us any other recommendations, other than what Karen read into the file. Okay? Okay, sir, go ahead.
Okay. The facility, like, Northeast Utilities is now changing over to Eversource. All New England power companies are becoming Eversource. And the Southborough facility is the emergency facility for the Northeast. So, basically, if there are companies coming from Canada, you know, New York, Delaware, anyplace like that, sending utility power companies to work on a disaster in New England, they all come to Southborough to get their jobs, get their equipment, get transformers, wire, whatever they need, poles, things like that. So, the facility would like to illuminate the sign to make it easier for these people unfamiliar with the area to find the facility.
Why?
Why?
I mean, if they use, they go online, or they use their map, it says a map, and it's going to tell them how to get there.
Yeah.
So, what is the reason why to use that as an excuse?
Well, it's, it's not an excuse, it's the reason why they want to do it.
Yeah.
To help the people find the facility.
Go forward.
All right. There. The current sign that was, we got a permit for and put up, is there now, and what they want to do is, the background of the sign's not going to light up just the letters. So, basically, the, even though the sign is, is white in appearance, there's black vinyl on the back of it, and the letters will light up just the color. So, it won't be like a giant, you know, like, square of light, it'll just be the letters of the sign itself lighting up.
What do you mean by the back of the sign?
Well, inside the back of the face, all right, is, is black, except for where the colored letters are. So, when they put lights inside of it, it's not going to be like a white square with colored letters, it's just going to light up the colored letters.
On both sides?
Both sides.
Yeah, I've got the thing, on both sides?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right. And, and-
So, the white, sorry, just to be clear, the white part won't be illuminated?
The white part, yeah, just the letters will be illuminated, and the logo for Eversource. So, they're not looking to be too intrusive, you know, like, and, it's, I mean, any other questions?
About it? Okay. Tom, I'll let you start.
Two points. One, I agree with Lee about the skepticism of why you need to illuminate the sign to show people where to, you know, if they have the address, people come from out of town, they go to that address, they see a big sign that says Eversource, I think they're going to find it without it being illuminated. That said, I personally don't have a problem with illuminating the letters. I mean, it's, it's, it doesn't seem to be obtrusive. I don't know if there's anyone here opposing, opposing my comments.
Andrew?
I had a question about, I guess it would be okay if you just, if you had the sign, and then you had like a flood, a floodlight, you know, on the ground that-
I think that's a lot about right, isn't it?
Okay, okay, yeah. So, I understand why, is there any existing sign there right now?
That sign in the picture exists now non-illuminated.
Oh, okay.
Basically, when they changed over to Eversource, we got a permit, they want an illuminated sign, the building inspector said you can't have one, so we got the permit to put up a non-illuminated one, and then we're coming for the special permission, asking to put lights in it.
But I guess what I was saying is, so, I mean, one of the things you could, that you could do is just have a floodlight on the bottom that just shines at it, and then, you know, you wouldn't need a special permit for that, and I'm just thinking about, you know, there's a bunch of other commercial properties right in the same area, and I don't remember exactly what type of signs they have, but I think, I think there's signs that just have a, like a-
Spotlight, floodlight on the bottom that's signed.
So, my, you know, my, I don't know how I come down on this.
Well, any, any kind of illumination has to get a special permit, that's unless you're on Route 9.
No, you need it on Route 9 also.
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think the bylaw allows illuminated signs, but if there's internal illumination, that's what, that's what triggers the-
Yeah.
That's, that's what's limited to Route 9, is internally illuminated signs.
All right.
So, I, I think it makes sense to have an illuminated sign, but, you know, the, if you have just the floodlight like everyone else has, and so, my concern is just that, you know, how is Eversource different than any of the other real businesses in terms of having the internally illuminated sign versus just the light from the spotlight?
I mean, basically, it's an emergency facility, it's not a, not a business that, like, people go to, you know? You light up your police station and your fire station.
Okay. Mr. David?
I have no issues with this. I think it makes sense. I think the internal lit sign makes much more sense than a floodlight. Floodlights have issues with, sometimes they get covered by snow, or they get, they get, the bulb goes out, or the, or something, some branch or whatever falls on it, or, or it gets shined, shined in the wrong direction, and maybe oncoming cars may see it, may blind them. Internally lit signs are a much more modern look, and I get the reason why Eversource wants to do it, makes sense to me. I'm assuming this is going to be on 24/7, or at least through the night?
It'll only be on for the night, like, if, if you guys have recommendations, they would, you know, like, some towns say you have to shut it off after a certain time, but then they would want to be able to turn it on if there was an emergency.
I mean, I, I, I would normally think about maybe putting in some time constraints on a sign like this, particularly something that's off Route 9, but because there's really no homes around there, and because it's pretty much all commercial right around there, and you're only a couple hundred yards from Route 9, I have no issue with the internal sign being on 24/7.
You, David, just to correct you, you have 57 units above that property that see that sign, behind the Gobankian property.
Yeah, but that's, 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 that's quite a distance away.
Well, it's an issue, but that's why the other signs weren't done that way.
That's still quite an issue, why, and it's, it is a different elevation.
I, I don't have a problem with the sign either. I think it looks pretty good as, as presented to us. I, I, I'm not a big fan of the floodlight idea. I mean, if there were, if there were abutters here that had an issue with it, I'd, you know, I'd be interested in hearing what they had to say, but apparently-
Do we have an abutters?
You know, there aren't, so, I, I think, I think it looks great, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
He's not allowed to talk.
I, I don't have a major issue with this, but I do have an issue. And the issue is, it's something that David brought up, because I've looked into this prior to, and I don't, I don't have a problem with it illuminated, but I want the Board to make a condition, or I'm going to recommend the Board makes a condition, that the sign illumination is on standard hours of operation, and if there is an emergency, then it gets put on for the 24-hour period of that time. But I see no reason why it should be 24 hours a day, every day of the week, seven days a week, for nothing. But if there's an emergency issue, like he stated of trucks coming from, or different places or whatever, then it gets put on, on those hours. So, I think as far as the sign goes itself, I don't think there's an issue. The standard hours of operation for the sign would be from, you know, in the afternoon, depending on the dock, but what time do you close at night normal?
The facility's like 24 hours.
What?
The facility, there's people there sometimes, all the time. It, like, doesn't have regular business hours.
Yeah, but the main business is there, when is it, the offices, when are they open and close?
There's no real offices there.
Right, this is not a, this is, this is a, I think this is an emergency facility that is, that is on 24/7. This is not a typical Eversource facility.
Yes, it is a typical, typical source, that they do all construct, all installations, everything out of that building, everything.
But the point is, don't we want to put hours of operation, so it's not on at midnight or 2 o'clock in the morning? Shut off at 10 o'clock or something, so that, you know-
It does have permits, permits for hours of operation.
I guess it does, yeah.
I, well, the thing is, the thing is that I think, my recommendation, it's up to you, the Board, is that we make a limitation of the hours of the sign, and it can go until 8 or 9 o'clock at night, and then that, in the case of an emergency, it can go 24 hours a day, which I think that would overlook the whole thing. The, the major issue with this is, and it's something that I want, I'm going to have to ask the Board to discuss later, is that the sign by law on the Town of Southborough needs to be changed. And this would be something that would, you know, it would change this and make it easier and better. There's no question about it, because my personal experience with the existing sign by law is, it's not proper, it's too old. So, it's up to the Board what they'd like to do. Any comments, or what do you?
Want to close the public hearing? No abutters, right?
Right, there's no, no abutters, yeah, we got that, but there are no abutters present, so, no public, so, what does the Board consider?
I mean, I, I personally don't have a problem if it's illuminated 24/7. We had recently with the Volvo dealership, and I know we put constraints on that, but with that, I didn't have a problem with it.
Yeah, but that's not 24/7.
I know, but I didn't have a problem if it was.
Yeah.
So, same thing with the, I don't, I don't see a problem with this. I don't think it's going to be something that's going to adversely affect traffic or, or anything. I, I don't think it's, I mean, it appears it's going to be nothing too bright or disruptive.
The, the other thing you have-
That's just my, that's just what I'm saying. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the 24-
Go ahead, David?
You know, I, I feel the same, this is an emergency facility. By setting times when the thing's lit and when the thing is not lit, obviously, it defeats the purpose of it being an emergency facility, because you get into a routine where it's on until it becomes more of a business sign than a, than a 24/7 emergency operation facility. You know, at what point do we determine who's going to police when there is an emergency? If a snowstorm's coming, or if a, or if a rainstorm, they flip the switch, they keep it on, is there any way to police that? There's no way to police that when, when, if, if we're saying, oh, in an emergency, you can turn it on, what does that mean? You know, when do you turn it off? So, I think just to make it, I agree with Paul, I think just to make it just easier, seeing that there's no, no one is, none of the abutters, no, no one from the town, the community is, is objecting to it, I think that we should just keep it 24/7, if, if that's what they want, to be 24/7. That's, that, because that's the whole idea of this facility. This is not a normal 9 to 5 bank. That's, that's my opinion.
The big question about it is, it's not in the application. It is not in the application, 24/7.
Man, I'm in favor of putting hours of operations on it, just because I, you know, if it's, there's no emergency, and they're just operating, what's the point to have a sign on at 2 o'clock in the morning, for no other reason, eating up electricity and whatever? You know, I don't, again, I'm skeptical about the real need to, to light it, to, because emergency people coming from out of state won't be able to find out if it's not lit, lit up. But I don't have a problem lighting it up, and if we put a condition on that you can't, you can't illuminate the entire thing, only the letters that they're planning to do, it'll be, it'll be, it won't be obtrusive, but, I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason to have it on 24 hours, unless you guys really feel like you need to.
I don't think they would put it on 24 hours.
What?
I don't think they would put it on 24 hours.
Well, that's why we're going to make the condition, I mean, I recommend also, the thing about it is, and, and, and something of what David said, I think we, we classify it, clarify it, as an emergency of outsiders, because they do, if there's a telephone line, a power line fall down on Route 9 or something, they have to go out and fix it, but it's their internal night shift that is doing it. It's only when they have people, like they've stated, coming from out of town to come into the facility, then it would have to be light lit, which is very rare. I mean, I don't know, in the last couple of years, we've had anybody come in town for anything like that, but the emergency stuff, they do, it's a shift, it's 24-hour day shift in the building, their crew comes and goes, they know where it is and where they're coming from, so they really, and they have, and they have not had it there for 18, 20 years, they've been there. There's nothing been there, and they've been the same type of facility prior to this, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, so to make it good, in the, in the long run, is that we agree to put the sign up, but I don't think there's anything wrong with it, and eliminate the hours to a certain time at night, and that it goes under an emergency thing after those hours for outside emergency companies, because themselves, they're there, they don't, do you agree on that?
Yeah, that's fine.
You don't have a problem with that?
I don't have a problem with that, no.
Andrew, you haven't made a comment?
I just want to say, I, I agree with Paul and David, that I think that, I don't see the problem with having it 24 hours, just because the, I think some of the conditions we're talking about, about what's an emergency and what's not, are, can be difficult to enforce, so, I think that's where I fall on this.
Well, the thing you have to realize, you go forward with that, and then you're going to have other people come in and want the 24-hour signs too, and that just-
I mean, I, I guess I'm viewing this as just a regular commercial sign, that, you know, if, if it were Volvo or something like that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want them having the sign on all night.
No.
And again, if, if the stated purpose for an emergency is, we're all agreeing that they can keep it on all night, if they have people coming from New Jersey at 2 o'clock in the morning, go ahead and put it on all night if we're giving them that, but, you know, I continue to think, what's, what's the point of, and they're not even planning to have it on all night anyway? You know, if we were treating it as like a regular commercial sign, we wouldn't, we would put some-
Well, if the applicant doesn't have any issue with it, we can put restriction. I don't have a problem with it.
No, that's what I'm saying, he agrees.
I work with whatever you guys want.
All right, so why don't we come up with some, some parameters?
I propose no later than 10 o'clock at night, and no earlier than 6 o'clock in the morning.
Are we still open? Is the meeting still open?
Yes, we're still discussing this, we haven't-
No, 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 we've closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing?
No, we have not.
Oh, okay, I thought we did.
What, what would be, what would be hours that you would like to see then, or what would be hours that would work?
Well, to, you know, like, 10 would be fine, and, and then, like, in the morning, when you still have it dark until 7, maybe like from, say, 6 to 7, or 6 to 8, when-
No earlier than 6, no later than 10 at PM.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's, that worked, that's, if that's, if that's works for, for, that's fine with me, then if it's okay with the applicant.
I think that, and I, I think that's the, I think that's proper, I really do, and in the, in the sign-
I mean, in the summer, it's not going to be lit up as much, because you're probably talking about a couple hours at night, and that's it.
And but even, like, if you have an outside, and, and I like it to specify outside emergency, because if there's an emergency internal, it's their own people that are doing it.
Yeah.
They don't need, right, am I right to say that?
Right, I mean, unless you have a hurricane or something in the summer, it's usually in the winter from ice storms and stuff like that.
But whatever, even if, I don't care when it is, or how it is, whatever it is, whenever you have to hire or get somebody to come from someplace else, you want them to be able to find a facility.
Right.
So, that would be when the sign would definitely have to be lit, and I think that's definitely a way to go. Is there any, any further discussion on this?
I'm good.
Excuse me?
No later than 10 PM, no earlier than 6 AM, then in an emergency, it can be 24?
Yes, and we're going to, Karen, what we'll do is, we'll close the public hearing, and as we vote, then we'll finalize that in writing for you. All right, so, everybody is agreeable, we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
Have a second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. Okay, now, the, the next step on the, on the public hearing is to write the condition that we've discussed. So, Tom, are you, any, David, who wants to?
Took a stab at it. I make a motion that we approve the application, subject to two conditions and one proviso, the two, two conditions being that the illumination can only be between the hours of 6 AM and 10 PM, except, the proviso is, except in the case of emergencies. And the second condition is that only the letters can be illuminated, not the entire sign structure.
Yeah, but, that's right, except for the fact that it needs to be somehow worded somehow of an outside emergency, because they could have an emergency right now and have, their people have to do it, and there's no-
Except an emergency, then there's no limit, they can be 24 hours.
Yeah, but there's no means-
I don't think you need to say that, Lee.
I don't think, I mean, there's no way-
No one's going to enforce it.
There's one, one of you at a time. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think we need to say that. I, I think we, I don't think we need to say outside, inside, you know, this facility controls all New England, so you could have areas, Eversource employees coming from different parts of New England, coming to this facility that are not familiar with Southborough, even though they're Eversource employees, because they don't necessarily have to come here all the time, to get whatever they need to get transformers or poles, to go to, you know, New Bedford, or to Boston, or wherever they go, because it's not just this, this small little area, this, this facility.
But that's why we, we, what we've been-
So, you know, they, they subcontract out not only out-of-state contractors, but they, in emergencies, they'll subcontract even in-state people. So, at what point do you put, is if it's an in-state person, out-of-state person, you know, does the light stay on then, is the light not?
Internal management. There's 24-hour people that work there that do that.
Yeah, I, I think we're getting into the-
And if you're going to have a limitation of hours-
We're getting into the minutia too much. I think that we should just keep it simple. I, I don't think we need to have that kind of wording.
All right, if we just say emergency, we can leave it to the building inspector to, to determine whether they're abusing it, or whether there's a true emergency.
Right. Right.
No, it needs to be defined. You can't just leave it open-ended.
You know, no, it doesn't have to be defined, and, and it can be, it can, you can allow the building inspector to interpret that. I don't have a problem with that. I don't think it needs to be defined, because we never, we could spend a half hour with a, with three paragraphs worth of definitions and still not cover everything. So, I think that we should leave it up to the building inspector, and an emergency is an emergency. I think that, I think that, I don't think EverSource is gonna be abusing it. This is not something that they'd be abusing.
Thanks. Clarify the motion for Karen.
Did you catch it the way, first time I wrote it? I think that captures it, 'cause it just says, you know, the hours of operation are between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, except in an emergency, where it can be 24 hours.
Well, I've got another question, because I, I honestly disagree with all of yous. What if we put a condition on this, that this gets reviewed by the building inspector in six months, and see, as we've done this in other lighting issues in town of Southborough, after it's up and done, if there's any complaints, are there any issues, there are, that it would have to come back in front of us again? Which is not a major issue or anything, but then that would go along with what you guys are saying and doing. But then if there is an issue that comes up, that would give the building inspector the right authority to bring it back and, and re-review it.
I think the building inspector has the authority already, if they think the, if they think the, if they think they're not following the terms of the conditions that Tom set forth, and they have the right to come, come before us. They don't need, we don't need to put it in-
You can just take zoning enforcement action, they don't have to come before us.
Right, exactly. So, I don't think we need to do it.
I think what he's thinking of, the board could, could have a condition that the board reserves the right to review the, the sign within six months, if there are, to consider any issue that applies.
Right, which we've done in lighting issues before with different commercial buildings that we've had. So, it gives them the right to do what you want them to do.
That's fine. I, I-
It gives them the right to do what you guys wanna do, but then it also, if there does an issue come up about it, then it's something that can be looked at again.
If there are no issues, it just goes away in six months.
Right.
And you fine with that?
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Do you add that? Alright, Karen, you know, would you explain, read, read to them the way you're gonna do that?
Reserves the right to review the illumination of the sign within six months, up to six months after the operational end.
Okay.
Does that capture it?
Okay. A second?
Did somebody make, did I make the motion? I made the motion, yeah.
Did we make a, did we have a?
What?
Did we have a motion?
Yeah, I, I think I made the motion, enunciated, we supplemented it through our discussion, that Karen just-
He made the motion on the three issues, and-
Now somebody can supplement the aggregate motion.
The issue of the six-month thing. So, those are the two, three conditions of the motion.
But I think we're voting on the, the entire package now.
Do you want her to read it to you, Paul?
Am I, am I, am I okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm-
Yeah, you're okay.
I'm good.
Alright, we, alright, so, the, the motion's on the table, so I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Anatomous. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. It'll take about 14 days to get filed.
Sure. Thanks very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Perfect timing.
How about that?
Jeff, do you wanna come sit on, come to the farm, I'm refused.
Alright, Tom, as you're all set, you can leave.
Okay.
Alright, Jeff, you can sit on this one. Huh?
I'm excited.
The board is opening up a, a, an application from, from, where is the application? I'm sorry, I gotta find the right one here.
Cumberland Farms?
Yeah, for Cumberland Farms. Karen, would you read the application into the record, please?
The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the hearing room of the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, on Wednesday, July 29th, at 9:00 PM, with regard to the petition of Cumberland Farms 365 Turnpike Road, Southborough. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to upgrade signage, including adding LED pump toppers and an internally illuminated diesel sign. Relief is requested under Section 174-11-2D. No sign can be illuminated between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and Section 174.11-3. Illumination shall be by white, steady stationary light. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the Office of the Building Department at the Townhouse during normal business hours. Leo F. Barlini, Jr., Chairman.
Okay. To start this off, just a clarification, this application, yeah, Karen, go ahead, read the decision of the planning board. Recommendation of the planning board.
Right, so this is from the planning board, Jennifer Bernie, Town Planner. Reference Cumberland Farms 365 Turnpike Road. In accordance with 174, Section 174-11 of the Code of the Town of Southborough, at its regularly scheduled meeting of June 8th, 2015, the planning board met and reviewed the proposed request for a sign for Cumberland Farms 365 Turnpike Road, Southborough. And report, reports that, one, the sign scale is in reasonable relation, relation to development scale, viewer distance and travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures. Answer is yes. Two, the sign size, shape, and placement serve to define or enhance architectural elements of the building, such as columns, sill lines, cornices, and roof edges, and do not unreasonably interrupt, obscure, or hide them. Answer is non-applicable. Three, the sign design is in harmony with other signage on the same or adjacent structures, and provide reasonable continuity in mounting, location, and height proportions in materials. Answer is yes. Four, the sign material, lettering, lettering style, illumination, and form are reasonably compatible with building design, neighborhood contact, and use. Answer is yes. Five, the sign size, location, design, and illumination are not judged to be, to present a safety hazard to vehi-, vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Answer is yes. The board voted to include the following conditions in regard to the application. The board requested that the pump toppers be set at three brightness with two layers of film, 3M Scotchell marking film, or similar. The board requested that the diesel sign have the same illumination as the pump toppers set at three brightness.
Okay. The other thing is, on this application, there is a letter from Cumberland Farms directly, giving her the, giving the sign company the authority to do the permitting. Okay, ma'am?
Hi.
Go forward.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Parker. I'm here representing Cumberland Farms. Also with me is Ken McIntyre. He's here representing Cumberland Farms. He's the area sales manager. So, if you have any questions for him, he'll be here to answer them. One thing I just wanna mention, which I didn't really catch it maybe at the planning board, is-
Excuse me, ma'am, you need to talk into the mic, so.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. One thing I just, when she read this, is it says, "The board requested that the diesel sign have the same illumination as the pump toppers with a three brightness." The, the diesel sign is what we call a scroller price sign. So, it's just, it's illuminated, and there is no brightness level on it, so I don't, I don't believe that we can do that. I would like to talk about the signs, first the pylon sign, and then talk about the LED pump toppers, if that's all right with you. The pump, the, the existing pylon sign currently has, as I mentioned, a scroller price sign. The scroller price sign is, you know, if you know what a scroll looks like in the old days, you turn them sideways. There's three mechanisms inside the sign, that you push a button and they turn and move the numbers to change the price sign. Currently, there's a blue panel for regular and a green panel for diesel. Cumberland Farms has started what they call a smart pay program, that allows people to get 10 cents off a gallon of gas if they are a member. So, what they'd like to do on the price sign is to convert the green diesel to blue, that will say smart pay. So, the regular price will say, say 260, the smart pay panel will say 250. That will remain static at all times. Now, in order to let people know that they have diesel at the property, they wanna add a one-foot-high by six-foot-wide diesel price sign. That will have a green background and white lettering. The white lettering will be the only thing that's internally illuminated. So, that whole sign is currently internally illuminated. We're adding six square feet to the sign. The reason that I had to come here for that particular sign is because of the hours of operation, which are 5:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night. Your bylaws say 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. So, I'm here for that sign, for that particular reason. Do you have any questions on that particular sign?
Just the diesel sign?
Just adding the diesel and converting the diesel to smart pay.
Any questions by the board? I don't have any questions.
Is, is the Cumberland Farms at the top, is that gonna be illuminated? Or is it, you said just the letter?
Well, no, that, that sign is currently illuminated.
The whole, the whole sign's gonna be-
Right, the whole sign is gonna maintain the illumination. But what happens is at night, it's just the blue and the green that's illuminated, the rest is opaque.
Oh, okay, I got it.
And then on the, the prices, it's the numbers and the, the word regula. So, it'll be the numbers and the word smart pay, that'll be illuminated. And then the, "We have diesel." The green background will be opaque at night. So, it'll kinda look like it's floating. Alright.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, now, I brought a pump topper here with me?
No, but I have questions.
Oh, alright, sorry.
Okay. The issue with the signs added, I don't have a problem with illumination or anything on the signs. The only thing is, you're increasing your signage-
Correct.
On the property. You are over the legal limitation of signage in the town of Southborough. So, how is that being handled?
The building inspector didn't tell me, I, I didn't get denied for overall square footage.
Well, you have, you have extra square footage by adding these extra signs. The other question I have is, on this smart pay, is that going to be on a different sign? Or the same sign is gonna change? I know in other Cumberland Farms, it's the same sign, and it changes every 35 seconds.
That's if it was an LED sign. LED signs, if you had an LED sign, we would try to propose what we call a, a smart pay alternator. That would alternate the prices from zero to 60 seconds. It would go this price, that price.
Right.
Because this is a scroller price sign, we're not able to do that. Therefore, that's why we need to change the panel, the green panel, from diesel to smart pay, and we wanna then let people know there's diesel there, therefore adding the six square feet. I, I'd have to look back to see, um-
That's no problem with that then.
So, what's allowed for square footage? 'Cause he didn't tell me that I was over the allowed square footage.
I mean, I think that when we go forward with this even further, let's, we'll go forward, and we'll discuss the square footage after. Okay?
Yeah, 'cause I don't know, if you can let me know.
You can go forward now.
Okay.
I imagine no other issues with that.
I thought, I thought we were allowed, if I'm not mistaken, 100 square feet on Route 9?
What?
I thought we were allowed-
You have a total limitation on the total property. And your, your building has many window signs, and those have to all get added up to the same quality as the square footage that's allowed.
75 square feet.
75 square feet for the pylon.
No, for everything on the property on Route 9.
No. Is that correct, for the pylon, or?
Well, you're allowed, excuse me.
I'm looking at it.
Ma'am, I am telling you, you're allowed 75 square feet on the total property.
Okay. So, they must have, they must have an existing variance for the, all the, they must have an existing variance-
Either.
They must have an existing variance for the signs, for the property, then?
No.
Then, they're over 75 square feet already.
There is an issue.
I, I don't know what to say.
No.
They, they put up what was approved probably during the-
No, it wasn't approved. 75 square feet, I was on the board. We approved 75 square feet.
So, what's there now?
I don't know what the total number is, but it's way over what it was. So, I think it, technically, all, I think it shouldn't bother, the thing is that, if the board makes approval on this, it's all well and good, but a recommendation that the building inspector review that issue, and it's up to him of whether, what has to be done or doesn't have to be done. That's all. Just to make it proper. So, he can take, and, you know, if it has to be changed, it does, if it don't. But the building inspector knows better than we do on that issue. It's just that the signage, because pumps, when they're originally approved, they put a camera system in them, with a video thing that wasn't even on the approval sheet.
We've since shut that off.
What?
That's not, that's not currently working anymore? They shut those off?
When did they shut them off? I was there the other day, they were working.
Well, the, alright-
I go there all the time.
Yeah, alright, here, here's what I'll say. There is a screen, and that screen has to have something on it, but it's not like a TV screen, and it doesn't change all the time.
Well, it did. It has since they put it in.
A year ago, when I was here, it was shut off. It will be shut off tomorrow. That's all I can tell you.
I know the videos are not running anymore.
No, the videos aren't running. What happens is, the pumps come that way, and that's just the way they're made now?
Yeah, excuse me, I wanna ask, sir, you know, did it get, use that mic, please? I'm just curious. I mean, I go get there all the time, and it's been on.
They, they have just the regular advertising on it, that's it. It's shut off, there is no video playing on there, because we've had complaints, and we've taken care of that.
It's a static display now.
Yes.
It used to have like a video loop.
But it does have audio. There's audio.
Yeah, we have music.
Well, you need audio as far as people being able to talk to the person, so you need-
You have to use the help button, is everything, you know, at the operation of the pumps, you have to have audio at the pumps. For our people to talk to the customers, and also for the customers to request help from us, so you have our audio.
That's like a regulation type of thing.
The thing is, I know, it's just something that needs to be looked at, and I would just say, we make a recommendation, and let the building inspector do it, when we get to that point.
Yeah, when I came, like, over a year ago, we did shut them off the next day. So, if the video is not pla-, that's the way they come now, you know what I mean? It's not like Cumberland Farms says, oh, I want, you know, the, it's just, they're made that way. And you don't know until you get them in, I guess. So, they weren't trying to do anything, you know, tricky, sneaky, whatever.
No problem. Okay.
And we did take the smart pay sign down from the front of the street, if you noticed that, a year ago. And I believe that's still back there somewhere. And that will, that will go-
We gotta hit it.
Yeah, that will, that will go away if, you know, the signs get approved, the main sign.
Okay, any further comments, ma'am?
Pump toppers.
What?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do the pump toppers.
Alright, let's do the pump toppers next, please.
Alright, now, bear with me when I show you this. This-
Excuse me, I completely disagree with the prices on that sign. We're gonna do it, let's do it.
That's the prices you get if you deny me no more.
I mean, they dropped eight cents a gallon today.
Alright, so basically, what I wanted to show you, this side of the pump topper, because this is the pump topper that, when I came a year ago, we were originally asking for. This was a pump topper that would say smart pay, it would alternate, and it would go from smart pay to non-member. Alright, and it would alternate, and it was, they were all gonna be a certain brightness. Now, having done these hearings for a couple of years now, and go into towns that aren't too, you know, keen on these type of signs, we've come a little, a long way as far as trying to make the towns happy. So, now I'm gonna turn it around. It's still gonna alternate, 'cause I can't stop that, but just let me show you what we're doing. So, this is gone now. Alright, so that's not there anymore. What we have, if you notice, see how bright this is? And then it gets dimmer and dimmer. What we have here is, we have a film that we take, and we put it over the whole pump topper. So, what that's doing is, it's reducing the glare. This pump topper is set at five brightness. We're gonna reduce it down to three. I can't do that, because the little button won't work, so I apologize for that. This is one I just take everywhere I go. So, basically, what we're trying to do is show you that we're trying to work with you. They are set back 50 feet from the roadway, they are parallel with the street. They're not meant to be seen from the roadway, they're meant to be seen by the people at the pump. The reason we're asking for the LED is because people have to go out there every single day and change those magnetic pump toppers. You know, it's a time-consuming task, there's eight pumps there, they have to take cones, they have to shut the lanes down. You know, in the weather, it's icy, it's snowy, it's whatever it is, they have to go out there and physically change these. And that takes somebody from the store to go outside and do this. It's a safety issue. Now, someone's left alone in the store, or whatever, you know what I mean? So, you know, we had a heck of a winter last year, hopefully not a repeat. But, you know, these are things that have to do, as far as the brightness, you already have canopy lights above you, so I don't think that these are gonna, you know, shoot, shoot off any additional illumination that should be a problem. You know, like I said, we are trying to- You know, like I said, we are trying to reduce the glare with the two, you know, coatings of thing, and then-
Is that, is that represented by the right side, what you think is going to end up looking like?
Yeah, it's going to be even a little bit lighter.
That's the one of the town recommendation from the planning board?
Planning board recommendation.
Would be that light there?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's even going to be a little dimmer. So like I said, it's for the people at the pump. It's so the people, because currently, we can change the price sign from within the building. Now we still have to go out daily and change the prices. So they will remain static at all times, except be changed once a day. Same as the sign.
Now, when the store closes at night after eleven-
They get shut off.
Those get shut off, too.
Right, the only thing-
Everything is shut off.
The only thing left on is emergency lighting.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, a question I have is, that is not going to fluctuate back and forth.
No, it'll remain static.
It's going to remain static.
Change once a day.
Okay. And I don't have a problem with the thing, but I do have an issue on the brightness of the light. I think that the second light at night should be that brightness versus the lower brightness, because the sign-
That would just be one layer of film, then.
Right, because, I mean, this is my personal, because I've seen them in other stores and stuff, and some places where you go, because they're under the canopy and everything, the lighting is so, it's kind of hard to see it. I mean, if I don't have my glasses, I have a hard time. And I just don't know if it's something that the board wants to consider, that at night, what do you call it, that they can go to, can you do that with the lighting? Or is that not able to have two different?
No, the pump, it has to all be one.
It would all be just one, so you can't go the other way.
It has to be one standard thing for it, because it's all electronically controlled, so you can't alternate, you know, breakers and everything between the different signs.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean-
So the issue is that whether you should have one layer of the film or two layers?
Right.
Right. So, I mean, it's something the board to consider if they want to go to one or the two. I think the middle one, I think is a little, and if you go to, I guess it's Irving in Westboro? What's the next gas station above you, Irving?
No, that's a golf, isn't it?
The one that just opened.
Oh, yeah, that doesn't help us, that, that's bright.
What?
That's very bright.
Very bright.
Yes.
And it's brighter than-
See, Cumberland Farms standard for their signs, no matter what LED sign, starts at six.
What is their standard?
Their standard is six. So we're going to drop it-
So what is it on one of the-
We're going to drop it down, that's set at six right now, so we're going to drop it down to three.
So the forty-nine-one is six?
Yes. So we're going to drop it down to three. You can't go any lower, because the bulbs will just burn out when you'd be constantly changing the bulbs, so.
You know what, I, I kind of agree with Lee. I like, I think the-
I mean, one thing I, you're talking about, one of the busiest intersections or most prominent intersections in Massachusetts. It's the intersection of Route nine and four ninety-five, two of our major thoroughways. Having a sign there, I mean, it's for gas, it's, it's a, it's a nice function for the town, for people all over the state. So as far as the brightness, it doesn't bother me if they, whatever. I think they've done a tasteful job on all of this. It's, it's perfectly reasonable for a gas station, it's, you know, we don't have neon-
This is, this is one of our flagship locations in Southborough, so.
I mean, I'm not an expert on what works best for lighting, but one thing I do know is red lights are the least difficult on your eyes. That's why they put them in submarines and all that other stuff.
The other thing is, if you look, if you look at the pumps on, on that location, coming westbound, you're almost on top of them before you can see them, you know?
Well, I think most people would be looking at these-
That's right. You have the bigger signs to look at. If you come in eastbound, it's down the hole, so you really can't see them. So I don't personally think it would be a major issue to have them in the second luminous versus the first three.
I wouldn't mind six. I, I don't think, I mean, you're, you're literally in the middle of an interchange. I mean, I don't understand-
It's on the, but it's-
I don't have a problem with it.
It's on a existing site. That site's, you know, a little tighter than it should be. We threw that before.
To be truthful, they're coming down, they're coming up that road and going down that road, they're not even noticing these signs.
That's right.
They're not even noticing them. They're seeing the big white building with the green striping around. That's what catches their eyes. The signs, you know, they're nice for us, for the operation parts of it. You know, because we, we handle the safety of our people, they don't have to go out there changing it, you know, with, with eight cars going at a time. It's a big safety factor for us and everything, where we can just press a button.
It makes sense. And the other, the other thing, the other thing with it is, the, the, the issue of the brightness, I don't think, because of the way it's located, that, that little bit of difference-
No.
Personally, I don't think it's going to make an issue traffic-wise or anything.
Only if you have trouble seeing, like you apparently do.
In general, for older people and stuff, I think it's, I think it's an advantage-
Yeah.
-to do that, I really do. And, and so that's not, I mean, how do you people feel?
That's fine.
Oh, believe me, we would take, we'd take the one on the left.
Yeah, we'd take the first one.
I'll take the first one, because again, that's-
So the one on the, the one on the far-
Left.
Left, is with no-
That's three brightness, but no film.
That's six, that's six brightness.
That's a standard industry right there, is six.
So it's going to get even dimmer, so maybe you don't need a film.
The one in the middle is level brightness three, but with one layer of film?
No, the one on the right is three. Or actually, three is even a little dimmer.
No film, this is one, and this is two.
Right.
And that, those are all lighted to six.
Right.
So otherwise, you say, leave it at six with one film, if you're fine with that one.
Yeah, I, I think that that's fine.
Six with one film? I mean-
I'm fine with six with no film if you want.
I'm fine with six. Maybe we shouldn't even put any restrictions on it, I don't know. Let, let, let the applicant decide what's best.
Well, I, I think that due to the general rule and regulation, that we ought to have some, some sort of a restriction, something which the planning board recommended, but I think a little stronger than what was recommended would be-
Yeah, I'd be happy with the one film. I think the applicant would be happy with the one film.
All right, board agreed.
We have no problem with that. That's easy, that's easy to fix.
Okay.
So you don't have to specify any brightness in the condition, you just say one layer of film?
Just one layer of film with the six.
That's, that, okay.
They're changing their, their application, right?
What?
They submitted the application for a certain brightness.
Right, but our condition is going to change that, right? Karen? What does the application say?
Three brightness with two bulbs up there.
So we can approve that, but have the right to go up to a three brightness with one?
But what is three brightness? What does that mean?
Three brightness.
Well, what it is, is your bulb's this big at ten, it gets smaller. The bulbs get smaller as the brightness goes down.
So which one did you put in your application?
Well, I, I thought I had to kind of put what the planning board, you know, recommended, so-
The recommend, we did the planning board recommendation.
So she put the planning board recommendation.
Yes, right.
That's why it's that way.
So, I mean, I'll-
As I stated before, they go in front of the planning board for recommendations prior to filing the application with us. So when she filed the application, then she did it, so that's why it's filed that way.
So normally, you wouldn't be able to give them greater than what they-
Applied for, yeah, that makes sense.
Why?
We could if we wanted to. But why couldn't we? You can do it.
That's just usually a general rule, that you couldn't give them more. You could give them less, but not more. They don't look average.
So I guess I shouldn't have done that?
What?
I guess I shouldn't have done that?
Well, if you're satisfied with this level-
Yeah, we have, we have other towns that that's what we're at, so.
You have, if, if, if you have-
What was submitted and advertised, yeah.
What?
You can't, you can't do more than what was advertised, seems to make sense.
Or you could, if you wanted, you could refile the application.
You could refile.
And turn around and-
We'll, we'll leave it as, as it is, and then go from there.
What your recommendation is, that's what we will go with.
Okay, all right, so we can stick with the two film. The two film with the, with the three, six loom light-
Right.
With the, with the, with the, with two layers of film.
Yeah.
It's three brightness, two film.
Three, three light-
As per the application.
With a six loom light.
As per the application.
So it'd be the three brightness and then two films?
As per the application.
I, I, that's good, I just learned something that I didn't know. Because I, I thought that you guys wanted me to put what the planning board said.
Any further discussion?
I'm good.
Oh, you want to close the?
Okay, so I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second. Oh, I motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor? Aye, okay. We agree on the three brightness and the two, what do you calls? Is that called, is that agreeable with the board?
Yep.
Okay. And is the board agreeable to ask the builder inspector to review the sign qualifications of sign, of square footage for the total property?
Okay.
Yeah.
We're agreeable to have him review, to have him review it?
Just have him review it.
Do it, that's his, you know, his-
Yeah, he's the enforcing officer.
Have him go through it.
As a condition of our approval of it, or just as a general statement?
No, we make it a condition, that he reviews it and, and just make sure it's proper, that's all.
But then, we also got to, I would approve this as well.
What?
And approve this as well. We were just approving that in your first day.
But we're approving that, too.
Yeah.
Right. But it doesn't matter, seventy-five square feet for the total property.
No, no, I'm just saying you're letting this part on.
Yeah, we're going to approve, yeah.
We're going to approve it all.
Yeah.
Right, no, quite good.
I think what, I think what you were saying was that the, having the building inspector review the total signage, that really just has to do with the pylon, but it doesn't have to do with the-
No, that's not true.
No, it has everything.
No, it's everything.
Every sign on the, every sign on the property.
Because, because the way that bylaw is written, it's, it's the sum of all the-
There were two square footages.
Sign, get the signs of the gas pumps.
And it's his interpretation of the-
Signs everywhere.
There were two square footages. One was on Route nine, and one was not on Route nine, correct?
So let the building inspector.
One was on Route nine, there's a square footage, and then there's one not on Route nine.
No.
So, no, I mean, in the bylaw, that's what it said.
One square footage.
I haven't, I haven't looked at it in a while.
We've closed the public hearing, actually.
Oh, sorry.
What I would recommend is, we, we approve the application in its entirety as written, but we'd also ask that the building inspector review the square footage as a, as a condition of the approval.
Okay. Do we have a second on the motion? Second. We have a second? And then, any further discussion?
I have one thing. We did talk about the hours. There was some discussion that the build, the building, the, the permit calls for six to ten, and they go five to eleven or something. So we need to-
But that's already-
But that's a part of the total application.
All right, I know, but we need to make sure that we're comfortable with that. If we're approving the application-
They're saying six to eleven?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem either, I just want to make sure everyone's-
Five to eleven.
Five, five to eleven.
That's what it's currently running at.
So-
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Add that to the decision.
Yeah, and the hours of operation being, all right, so then I would also-
I wouldn't, I don't know if that's-
Excuse me, Karen?
There's nothing on the application about hours.
I would leave it all.
They must already have an approval.
Excuse me, let's, one thing at a time.
Public hearing's closed.
Public hearing's closed.
Public hearing's closed.
Yeah, so we-
I mean, what we could say is, we could just say that the building inspector would review the hours of operation and the signage issue. That's all, let the building inspector.
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah.
And let Mark take it, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so Karen, do you, I'll set on the decision.
So to approve the application-
Hold on, please, go ahead.
Well, she was asking for me to say it. So approve the application as provided, with the condition that the building inspector will review the total square footage and the hours of operation.
Okay, all right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion that we close our meeting tonight and schedule our August twenty-sixth meeting at seven thirty.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing tonight.
Excuse me, one minute, Karen?
Oh, yeah, we could.
No, because we have nothing else to do. That's the only thing on the agenda, and, you know, and who knows if they don't even come, so.
Got seven.
So we do seven thirty.
All right, so I make a motion to close the public hearing tonight, and, and to have our next meeting at seven o'clock on the twenty-
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty-
On the twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth of August.
And just so everybody knows, there are the three of us that have to be here. And as I stated before, no, you weren't here, but we stated before, if any one of us can't be here, we have to notify Karen immediately, because we have to continue the public hearing. The two that are there will come in, and we continue the public hearing. We cannot have a meeting, a public hearing, but only two members. The applicant's aware of that, it was brought up by Mr. Monchon. That's the way it is.
Okay, all right.
Okay?
Second.
All in favor? We're done.
Good job.